Hello, this is Mark Sessions, Scottsboro City Council of Order. Invitation given myself and the pledge led by Mr. Patrick Stewart. Let's pray. Dear heavenly fathers, we come together this evening. We stop and lift up your name and give you thanks and praise for this day. Lord, we invite you here among us. Father, we ask that our focus be centered on you. That we make decisions for this city that keeps your will in mind. Father, we ask that you continue to watch over this city, its employees, its citizens, and our leadership. It's in your precious name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First on the work session this evening is to discuss school resource officer's funding program. Dr. Rhea, did you have something that you wanted to offer in that regard?
Okay, thank y'all for giving me a few moments. I don't know that I've ever spoken before such a distinguished and intimidating vice before, but I didn't know y'all were gonna be sitting that high. Anyway, I do want to read a letter that I crafted for each of you, and I know that you obviously could read that on your own time, but I would like to read it for the record. The letter says, "Dear members of the Scottsboro City Council," it says, "One of the most important topics for schools and communities is the matter of school safety. With that said, we currently have added some additional layers to our security measures within the schools to include the following. Number one, secure access doors at all schools and at the central office. Number two, we've added a security fence at SJHS at the junior high to join the two external buildings, that's the lunchroom and the gym, with the main building, and then we have a raid panicked out for all of our schools. While we're pleased with the results of these measures, we're always in the process of doing all we can to provide additional options to assist in protecting our faculty, staff, and students. One of the latest measures that has been at the forefront of the school security debate has been the introduction of a sentry program that allows schools to have an armed administrator at school. While I applaud the efforts and sentiments behind this measure, I'm not comfortable with arming our school administrators in the Scottsboro City school system. It is my belief that a trained school resource officer, or SRO, is the best option that we have in terms of providing protection for our faculty, staff, and students. For the past 12 years, we've had two SROs that are provided by the city of Scottsboro through the police department budget. We're very thankful for those provisions, but are always looking for methods to fund additional officers. So it is with that thought that I would ask for your consideration for the following. Number one, there's an annual cost for school resource officers. Salary benefits is about $65,000. What we would like to consider is number two, the possibility of an opt-in program included in billing for city-provided services. For example, we all get a water sewer and gas bill. I get one every month, and again, I'm just using that for an example. Currently, there are about 6,600 customers, that's individuals, homes, and businesses that pay a water sewer gas fee. So for example, and much like many of us get pamphlets from colleges that we've attended that ask for $5, $25, $50, those type things. Just for example, if there was an opt-in, which would be voluntary, as you'll read, and number three, but if there were 6,600 customers who all opted in at $3 a month, that would be $237,600 per year. That's if all 6,600. Now, some would, some wouldn't, some might even do more. Again, $3 is just an example. Now, the opt-in program would be voluntary, and it's provided to individual customers and businesses, and again, that includes the option to possibly give more or to give less, and of course, people could opt in and opt out as well. Number four, funds from an opt-in program to be used exclusively for school resource officers. What we would like to see is at some point in time, the high school two officers, while we could share one at the junior high college because of their proximity, it would be great to have one at each, one at Caldwell and one at Nelson. And then five would be the additional funds needed for four additional officers, and that would be about $260,000 per year plus vehicle costs. Now, I believe that it is our community's desire to provide the very best in terms of safety for our faculty, staff, and students. An opt-in program would provide the people of Scottsboro the opportunity to make this happen. Now, I'm extremely confident that the challenge would be met and done so in an expedient manner, and our community has always stepped up to the plate when it comes to our schools. Now, of all the confidence in the world, this would be no different. I would ask that this be the starting point for a conversation to begin in terms of the provisions for additional SROs for our schools. It would be my honor and pleasure to assist the Scottsboro City Council and the office of the mayor in any way that I can in this endeavor. And as always, it's a great day to be a wild kid, and I still believe that our best days in the Scottsboro City schools lies ahead. So again, this is just a conversation starter. We've seen some things like this in other towns, and you know, it's not necessarily a new idea, but it's something that I just want to bring to your attention, and again, I would offer any assistance that I could, but I believe the safety of our schools is something that's very important. I know I've spoken at times with the mayor since I've been here, spoken to Chief Dahl, we've talked about safety measures. Mr. Light, the water sewer gas, has been very helpful in terms of giving me some information. So again, I want to tell those gentlemen that I appreciate them and the help that they've given me, but again, this is something that we really, really believe is something that we might want to consider. Again, I'm just not really in favor of the sentry program. I'm sure that you are aware of how that works, and we certainly could go into more detail even tonight about that program, or maybe at some other time if you'd like to speak with it, but again, we just would like for y'all to consider that, and I certainly would take any questions if you had any.
Thank you, Dr. Rhea. Any questions or comments?
I'd just like to add that we've had this discussion ongoing for several months with Chief Dahl, and I had reached out to Mr. Light and Water Sewer Gas, and one of the things that, and we've met multiple times, that Water Sewer Gas has upgraded or implemented a new billing system that would allow us to work with them closely, and it would just, you know, I think we've talked about the school system would lead the charge as far as getting information out, and we've talked about different ideas of how to, we'd even involve, clean up with our IT department about how to create that file, that database. A lot of that already exists. Some people would feel like to do a one-time contribution, some it may be a line item on their bill, and some people will choose not to participate, and that's fine, that's why it's an entirely voluntary program. And one of the things that I think we all agree on is we would not expend any of these funds till we had salary in place for one year for one officer, whether that be the start of the school year, or it be the start of the second semester of this coming year and would roll into the first semester of the next year. We've even looked at the scenarios. The chief said, you know, what if the funding drops off? And we've talked about that, so been a lot of discussions, and a lot of work, and a lot of thought in this.
Thank you, Dahl.
Thank you.
Moving on, we'll, number two is discuss de-annexation of Allen property. You have a map in your packet. This property, it's my understanding, lies at the very edge of the city limits. I guess the property owner has gone to the planning commission and requested that that property be de-annexed from the city limits. Any questions or discussion?
Simple question. To get a piece of property annexed, you have to join, be joined to the city. To get one de-annexed, what happens if there's property past that, if you've got that one? And just quickly, looking at that map, there might be a small piece of property past that one. So would they be de-annexed as well, or, I guess I'm asking Ms. Kenner to argue?
The only person that can answer to be de-annexed is the property owner themselves. And from what I understand, this is Mrs. Allen's property, this is part of the property that's annexed, and her late husband requested the city to annex it, which I think had to do with the possibility of some meter at the store being removed. It's my understanding that the store is not open and probably will not reopen, and with tax assessment changes, this has hit Ms. Allen pretty hard, and therefore lies the request on her part to leave the city limits. So Mr. Parks is there to represent Ms. Allen, and Ms. Allen is here.
Yes, and I don't have an issue with this taking place. I only was worried about if there were other properties past that one. What happens for them?
If I may, this is the last property in the city limits, and in fact, is the only property, I put some maps there for orientation purposes. As you go across the second body of water going down 79, this is the only body of water, excuse me, this is the only property west of the second body of water that is in the city limits. It is by itself, and realistically, it is unique as far as the council is concerned. I've looked at the maps, and I don't believe there's another situation in the county, or excuse me, in the city where the city has a piece of property, so it's just that it propels the limits. I don't believe there's another situation on the perimeter of the city limits where there is a comparable situation where just one isolated landowner is across a body of water and at the extreme limits of the municipality. I think as far as the what if someone was passed, or I don't think that person could be de-annexed without asking to be de-annexed, so I don't think Ms. Allen or someone similarly situated could affect any property owner other than herself.
Yeah, I was looking at this piece of paper when it go with the resolution.
It's what you showed.
Yeah, that's just a photocopy. That's the original.
And there's lines here, and there's also a thing here that says Scottsboro City.
Correct, so that is, that is the, that is the resounding request that went to the planning commission that they approved five to zero. And that was showing, here it is in color. Always gotta get it on Josh, he doesn't always make the copies in color. So this was showing the current end of the city limits.
The, that's the property. Current end of city limits, and it has the letter of.
No, no, this is this dark one right here. So that's the current end.
Josh, you can make that very plain.
And what we had shown there were two possibilities for where the limits could end. There may be a reason to have the limit on the east side of that bridge and body of water. That might be important for policing, it may be important for road construction and cost, or the other side of the body of water is feasible to us. That would be a decision that would be better for you folks, though.
As this was done, let's just look at, I believe, I don't know if it's anyone changed the cost for the cost for the state of the city limits.
And obviously, we can't, we can't actually take it out since we don't know that. As far as Ms. Allen's property, she is the last customer on the line, as it's a.
Any other questions or comments? Yeah, we'll place that on the agenda next week. Number three is discuss resolution 2018 dash zero seven dash two six, section five, five three one one, rural area public transportation. I believe this is a resolution that we pass every year that assists with funding for the, for the council on aging, kept trying to say senior center and it wouldn't come out, to provide funding for the bus transportation for the senior center. Any questions, comments in regards to that? We'll place that on next week also. We will hold off on delegations, and which there are no delegations, but we'll hold off on reports until after the special call meeting. At this time, we will move into a special call meeting for the express purposes of nomination and hopefully appointment of applicants for the city council place one. At this time, I'll open nominations to the floor.
I'd like to nominate Jennifer Bell.
Excuse me, I apologize. Since we're moving over into a meeting, we'll have to have a roll call prior to that. Ms. Phillips, will you have a roll call?
Mr. Patrick Stewart?
Here.
Mr. Gary Stewart?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Wallingstir?
Here.
One item on the agenda this evening is consider city council place one appointment. I'll hear a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Patrick Stewart makes no motion. Is there a second?
Okay.
Mr. Keith Smith, second to any discussion. All in favor indicates by saying aye.
Aye.
And with that, I will open nominations.
I'd like to nominate Jennifer Bell.
Mr. Gary Stewart nominates Jennifer Bell. Other nominations?
I'd like to nominate Linda Bray.
Mr. Smith nominates Linda Bray. Other nominations? Nominations are closed. Ms. Phillips, will you call for the vote?
I would Jennifer Bell. Mr. Patrick Stewart?
No.
Mr. Gary Stewart?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
No.
Mr. Wallingstir?
Yes.
For Linda Bray?
Patrick Stewart?
Yes.
Gary Stewart?
No.
Keith Smith?
Yes.
Tony?
Wallingstir?
No.
Motion fails. I will now reopen nominations, or is there any other nominations?
I'd like to nominate Jennifer Bell.
Any other nominations?
I'll nominate Greg Mashburn.
Any other nominations? I'd nominate Linda Bray. Any other nominations? We'll close the nominations. Ms. Phillips, will you do a roll call vote for Jennifer, Jennifer Bell?
Mr. Gary Stewart?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
No.
Mr. Wallingstir?
No.
Mr. Patrick Stewart?
No.
Ms. Phillips, will you do a roll call vote for Greg Mashburn?
Mr. Gary Stewart?
No.
Mr. Smith?
No.
Mr. Wallingstir?
Yes.
Mr. Patrick Stewart?
No.
Ms. Phillips, will you do a roll call vote for Linda Bray?
Mr. Gary Stewart?
No.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Wallingstir?
No.
Mr. Patrick Stewart?
Yes.
Motion fails. Motion fails. I will reopen nominations.
I'd like to nominate Jennifer Bell.
Any other nominations?
I'd like to nominate Beth Manning.
Any other nominations? I'd nominate Linda Bray. Ms. Phillips, we do a roll call vote for Jennifer Bell, please.
Mr. Gary Stewart?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
No.
Mr. Wallingstir?
No.
Mr. Patrick Stewart?
No.
Will you do a roll call vote for Beth Manning, please, Ms. Phillips?
Mr. Gary Stewart?
No.
Mr. Smith?
No.
Mr. Wallingstir?
Yes.
Mr. Patrick Stewart?
No.
Will you do a roll call vote for Ms. Linda Bray?
Mr. Gary Stewart?
No.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Wallingstir?
No.
Mr. Patrick Stewart?
Yes.
Motion fails.
Motion fails, even though it's a waste of time, I'll open nominations once again.
Jennifer Bell?
Jennifer Bell, or is there any other nominations?
Linda Bray.
Any other nominations? Ms. Phillips, will you call for the vote?
Mr. Patrick Stewart? For Jennifer Bell?
No.
Mr. Gary Stewart?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
No.
Mr. Wallingstir?
Yes.
For Linda Bray?
Patrick Stewart?
Yes.
Gary Stewart?
No.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Wallingstir?
No.
We'll move to reports. Mr. Mayor?
Just want to say that the Jackson Jubilee Saturday was a big success. We had right at ninety runners for the cut run that morning, and lots of spectators, and I think, I know Gary, Packard were there, the, I think I talked to Meg today, and they cleared a little over $2,000 after expenses, so that gives us about $6,000 towards the mural program. It was very successful. Thank you everybody for participating.
Mr. Patrick Stewart?
Just to reiterate what the mayor said, the Jubilee was definitely a success, and I heard a lot of people saying that they wish we'd do a lot more activities like that downtown, and would like to thank Meg and everyone that was involved in getting that put on. It was a lot of fun, and it's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Mr. Gary Stewart?
I also was there this weekend. I thought it was really good turnout, saw a lot of people out, and a lot of visitors from out of the county and out of the county were there, and I thought it went really well, enjoyed seeing everyone out there. And we appreciate all of you coming tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Plaid.
Yes, last meeting, we had discussions about repair of city property, and I believe at that time we stated that you, at sort of a meeting between yourselves, Mr. Kenner and the mayor discussed this. I was at a meeting Thursday night, I believe it was Thursday night, I talked to Mr. Kenner, and I was wondering why with the city council, only two can meet legally, and I was wondering how we couldn't have had a second person involved in that meeting, and of course, I guess he wouldn't agree to the answer to that. So I started to look for the meeting, and that's a hard meeting to find, because I got, not for any particular reason, I'm not saying that, but I wasn't here, and everybody I talked to said I hadn't seen one of them. As it turned out, I think you had, it may be at your office.
Due to my incapacitation, it's held by our own company.
That's not. But in talking with you, I think you said that you were preparing a letter for the council, and maybe not, not this week, maybe later we had it completed. And what concerned me is the situation, the cost of this is still going up from what I can understand. One of the prices has now gone from what it was gonna cost to now just being for parts with the labor still left, and, so I guess I have this question for the mayor, it is, we're talking sixty, seventy, eighty thousand dollars, we don't really know how much we're talking yet, but how are you gonna pay for this? It's not budgeting, and isn't one of the two departments budget. It never came before the city council to pay for it, so it's just out there. And I was hoping to find out from you where that money is coming from.
Based on the meeting Friday with Mr. Kenner, Mr. Wallingstir, Mr. Wallingstir and I agreed to get with Ms. Twitter and look at the budget, look at our capital outlay. Ms. Twitter was out today, is out tomorrow. Mr. Wallingstir was gonna set that meeting up.
So you're saying you don't know?
Just saying we've gotta look at the budget.
I've been, I've been on the council twelve years now, and every time something like this happens where we have to fix a piece of equipment, it comes before the city council if they do not have the money in their budget. And this is a lot of money for the city council to find out after the fact, and we keep talking about it, and, but we're not really getting anywhere as far as, are we not, do we not count anymore as the city council? Do we, do you just go around the city council now and spend eighty thousand, ninety thousand, whatever it costs, and then someday you come back and say, look, would y'all approve that? I, for one, I've never seen it happen this way before. And we are an integral part of this city's government. We're elected by the same people as the mayor, and then we appoint our elect council president, and certain rules apply, and no rule aren't being applied to us, and I don't understand why. And you can't really tell me right now where that money's coming from, because you don't know. And then we have to approve it if you think you found some money, but it's, I've never seen it operate like this, and I just want you to understand that I don't think what you're doing is right. And all meetings in the world we have, if it's just a couple people sitting and talking, we're going nowhere, and the people of this city pay their taxes, and they expect us to spend their money wisely, and we're not doing so. And I know, I know you get tired of listening to it. I get tired of talking about it, but I get tired of not sleeping every night because I can't figure out if we're gonna go broke or nothing, because we're not doing it right, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. I didn't want to interrupt you, so I didn't interject until there.
I won't interrupt you.
It's already not the case. We did have a meeting Friday. The main topic of that meeting was basically lack. We did have a meeting Friday, the main topic of that meeting was basically lack of communication. And I think the mayor and myself and Mr. Kenner had a productive meeting, but the fact of the matter is that the lines of communication have not been as open as they should be, not only between the mayor's office and the council, but the mayor's office and some department heads, and especially financial director. I am scheduling a meeting this week with the financial director, we spoke today on the telephone, so I will have a better understanding of the intricate details of these transactions and these acquisitions, or these agreements for certain services to be rendered. And we will be bringing that before the council. The council will then have a decision to make whether to pay those invoices or not. The reason that, quite frankly, another council member was more than welcome, I had contacted the legal municipalities in regards to what was going on, and their recommendation was council president, legal counsel in the mayor's office to me. And certainly was not my intention to exclude another council member, I think that would have probably been a good idea. If you'd have called me, I'd have told you where the meeting was.
I tried, but what happened?
Well, I'll move back and look at my phone, but I don't think that's the case. The fact of the matter is, I think that not only here, in this situation, I have been saying for four years that some of the ways that our budget is carried out, quite frankly, I have a problem or an issue with. We have traditionally allowed department heads to move budget dollars between line items. I have a problem with that. We as a council approve a line item budget. If you're going to move monies between line items, I believe that it should come before this council and be approved. Otherwise, what's the purpose of us approving a line item budget? That is one of the issues that I think that we have, not only in this situation, but in every, every year as we fulfill our budget requirements. I think all parties agreed Friday that this is not a situation that will be acceptable going forward, and we're going to lay out a plan to administer our budget in a more efficient and professional manner. And again, I think this is an opportunity to address some issues that I feel like we've had for some time. So again, the meeting not being held here was nothing to try to hide, I just, I thought that I'd have my cast off my foot this week, and that unfortunately is not the case, so I still can't drive, depending on somebody to take me hither and yon. So it was just the most convenient for me to ask the mayor and Mr. Kenner to meet at my office, and I appreciate their willingness to do so. Again, as I said last week, this is not the way we, as a city in Scottsboro, want to operate, and it's not going to be tolerated. But we are where we are, and we have to assemble a plan to do for. As I had told yourself, Mr. Stewart, when I spoke, that I will write a report, but again, I'm not, I'm not familiar with day-to-day activities, and I need to do some more research before I come able to do that. I'll answer any questions for me that you have. With that, I'll hear a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Gary Stewart makes the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Patrick Stewart, second. All in favor indicates by saying aye.
Aye.
We stand adjourned.